All this meeting ordered?
Well, Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mr. Amos from Mr. Schmidt. And Mr. Welper.
Here. Want to approve the agenda as proposed?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have one item on the agenda. Who'd like to take that?
I'll take that, Mr. Chairman. This is a request by Shay Trask to purchase two city-owned lots generally located adjacent to nineteen forty-seven Rainbow Drive.
I'll second that.
Okay, uh, Mr. Anderson or Chris?
Um, this lot, what do you want to know there, Mr. Councilman?
We just wanted to get, uh, an idea of what this is all about, Mr. Reston.
All right, these two lots, uh, we acquired in nineteen seventy. I think it was related to the drainage way that, uh, the city was working on. Uh, that's runs behind the property. And it's just been sitting and getting mowed by the city since nineteen seventy. And, uh, we're lucky enough to have someone that wants to come and build on it and get rid of it.
And are you Mr. Trask?
Yeah.
Could you, uh, sort of explain what your project is here?
Um, so this is just, it's kind of a smaller two-story house, um, with a two-stall attached garage. A single-family home, just somebody who wants to build over in that area. There's not many lots. Um, so they're also, they love that three-year tax abatement on it, so they're excited to do something new construction and they want to build a house over there. Total, it'd be three-bedroom, three-and-a-half bathroom. Um, so we're thinking it'd be assessed in the two-hundred to two-twenty range. So bring in, you know, thirty-five hundred to four thousand taxes once all that kicks in forever. And then city doesn't have to mow it anymore.
Right.
Okay.
Anything else?
Well, could you just stay there? Any questions either?
Um, we're estimated at like s- almost seven hundred on the main and then seven hundred up and about five hundred in the basement.
Three choices here, you don't know which one yet?
No, this is, uh, did I give three?
Yeah.
Oh, for the exterior?
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, the, uh, these are just kind of some rough sketches of what other plans look like that we've done or that are similar. We're kind of thinking that first one. Kind of some darker colors, a little bit of stone or something on it, just to kind of blend in with the neighborhood over there.
Sure.
Um, with the trees and stuff, we want to kind of keep it darker color just to kind of blend in a little bit more. But we're going with kind of a simple prairie look, trying to keep it kind of an Iowa feel to it.
That's Iowa.
Well, with the darker colors, the prairie look, I guess. With the garage, it'll be, the garage will be a single-story off one of the sides. So it'll kind of even it out a little bit more and not make it look just like a big box standing up there. We think we'll divide the, the top half will be kind of a darker color than the bottom. Just that top, like quarter section, just to kind of give it a prairie-style look.
Do I understand you're building this or he, or someone else is building?
Um, LGC of, well, LGC, so we'll be building it for a client, but I'm the realtor that's involved, so I get the fun stuff.
Gotcha. Well, all three are attractive whichever one you build.
And you already have somebody that's planning to move in?
Yeah, this is for, for a specific client, yep.
Okay.
Yep. Younger gentleman that's always kind of lived right over in that area. So, he's wanting to build over there.
It's fine with me.
Mr. Chairman, I'm looking here and it's, uh, saying that, um, they're building on both of the lots to stay away from the creek that runs through the property.
Yep.
Is that creek an issue as far as flooding or anything like that? Does it flood or is it?
I don't believe so. That's one thing where we want to get past this and then do our final surveying on everything to make sure we can keep it out, but, um, it shouldn't be an issue. We're a little ways away from it. It's quite a bit higher where the house is actually going to sit.
You can see in your packet too, Noel Anderson, County Plan Development Director, you can see in your packet here where it shows where the garage approximate location is on that aerial photo. The drainage wave is basically that tree line back down there. The lots actually go down to the south of that, so there's land on both sides. We did speak with engineering, um, we do have a, a study for this entire drainage way area that has specifications for what the culvert sizes are, and these culverts have been put to those sizes over the years. There's no specifics in the study as to anything in terms of modeling of the actual drainage way, so as long as the culvert sizes are put to the correct sizes, it's meeting the, the requirements of what they believe is for, necessary for flow through that area. It's not actually located in the floodplain, um, on the floodplain maps, um, so it's a, it's not actually shown as a floodplain in terms of drainage purposes.
I just saw that on there where it says to stay away from the creek, so I,
Yep.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, hey Noel?
Sure.
Um, lots required in nineteen seventy, circumstances unknown. Are we sure we didn't, uh, buy it for road purposes or anything? We don't want to get into a sunny-side south.
We're, we're researching that. Um, we believe it was, we definitely believe it was bought for the drainage way purposes. Uh, we went back to look at the aerials from the nineteen fifty, sixties and seventies, and it was just open land with the drainage way on it. Um, but we're going to try to pull the deeds on those and actually see what we can, what we can find from that point, standpoint as well.
Okay, I mean, the, the person you bought from is probably dead and it was probably a total acquisition, so there's probably not a problem, but I'm just,
Yep.
You know?
We should know that in the next couple of days.
Okay. Any, anything else?
No sir.
So, so Mr. Anderson, this is, what we're going to be doing here is just making a, taking a vote to move this into full council?
That is correct. Going to full council, then we'd actually craft a development agreement, um, that would say that they're going to build on it after it's conveyed to them within a timeframe, um, so that we're creating some taxable value on there and a benefit back to the city.
And this, uh, when it gets to council, the questions that have been asked here will be in front of us so that we have that information.
That is correct.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to, uh, move this item to the full council.
Well, we just approve it as it is.
Well, make a motion to approve this.
We just have to do a voice.
Actually, already done that, bye.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Otherwise, everybody in favor of approving this, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? It's passed?
Motion for adjournment.
Second.
We're adjourned, thank you.
Thank you. Ready? Let's call our Human Resources Committee to order. Madam Clerk, would you read the roll, please?
Mr. Welper?
Here.
Mr. Jacobs? Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mr. Powers?
Here.
Mr. Lynn?
Here.
Mr. Amos?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the agenda. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion passed. We have one request today, if someone would take that.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Lynn?
I move to, uh, approve the que- the request from the Chief of Police for authorization to appoint one police officer recruit from the current civil service list.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this request. Do you need any explanation on this? From anyone? Hearing none, we need a roll call, please.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes. Good, motion is approved.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion and second on German, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you. Let's call our Finance Committee to order. Madam Clerk, would you read the roll, please?
Mr. Jacobs?
Here.
Mr. Powers?
Here.
Mr. Welper?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move the approval of the agenda and approval of the minutes of October sixteenth, two thousand seventeen as proposed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the agenda and minutes, questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion passes. Under new business, we have four travel requests.
Mr. Chairman, I'd take travel.
Okay.
Bob Lenzkow, Combination Inspector, to attend a class on Residential Building Inspector, or the exam in Coralville, Iowa, October twenty-fifth, amount not to exceed a hundred ninety-nine dollars. Lou Ball, Chief Building Inspector, to attend a class on Wisconsin Commercial Building Code Refresher. Destination Madison, Wisconsin, dates February twenty-fifth through the twenty-eighth, amount not to exceed one thousand two hundred ninety-five dollars. Steve Holmbrucker, Director of Waste Management Services, to attend a meeting, Eleventh Annual Four States Governmental Affairs Meeting, EPA Region Seven Office, Destination Lenexus, Kansas, dates November fifth through the sixth, amount not to exceed three hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents. Sergeant Greenly and Police Officer Moore to attend a class on Radar Lidar, Lidar Instructor Course, Destination Johnson, Iowa, Johnston, Iowa, October twenty-third through the twenty-sixth, amount not to exceed eight hundred dollars.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the four travel requests. Any questions on any of those? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, the travel requests are approved. Pre-ahs?
Mr. Chairman, pre-authorization's to expend over one thousand dollars. Engineering, thirteen thousand eight hundred dollars for soil borings for Delane Avenue Detention Basin Project. Leisure Services, three thousand three hundred thirty-six dollars. Final grading at the log drop site at the east of Falls Avenue. Amended pre-authorization, more work was required than originally was projected. Leisure Services, four thousand five hundred dollars. Professional Design Services, in bid letting assistance for the replacement of the rubberized play surface in Marx Park. Leisure Services, seventeen thousand two hundred seventy-three dollars, eight cents for forty-eight LED Metalux LED Fixtures for Young Arena. And Sewer Department, four thousand two hundred fifty-four dollars plus four hundred dollars shipping handling for the Vermont Bearable Speed Gear Molderer for Number One Gravity Belt Thickner.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on all the pre-ahs. Any of those raise questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, the, those are approved. We have one budget light item amended, which is on file at the City Clerk's office. And we also have the bills payment. This, bills payment this week are four million two hundred and ninety-five thousand, one hundred and seven dollars and eighty-five cents. That's four comma two nine five comma one zero seven point eight five.
Second.
Motion and second on bills payment, any questions there?
Chairman, I'd like, if Michelle could just give a, uh, synopsis of, that number appears to be a little higher than it normally is, and if we could just get some kind of an indication of why that is. For the audience. Sorry.
Michelle Weedner, Chief Financial Officer. This is a larger bill payment than we've had for a while. We are making a fairly large payment on behalf of the Tech Two Project at one million two hundred seventy-five thousand dollars that was added late Friday. So that's a big addition, and it's really about the only, well, housing, monthly payments of three hundred and fifty-three thousand, and we do have some construction in there. But other than that, there's nothing really unusually large, I don't think.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, the bills are paid.
Mr. Chairman, I move for adjournment?
Second.
Motion and second on a German, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.
All right, good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome you to this evening's city council meeting. Madam Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Mr. Jacobs?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mr. Powers?
Here.
Mr. Lynn?
Here.
Mr. Amos?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt? Mr. Welper?
Here.
All right, and I just want to remind the council to read into the, to, to speak into the microphone so I don't get in trouble a little bit later. Uh, will you join me now for the, uh, moment of silence? It's your opportunity. If you want to stand or sit, it's up to you. All right, thank you. Uh, this evening's pledge will be led by Kelly Felkley, our City Clerk.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, and also another note, Councilman Schmidt indicated he would not be here this evening.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Uh, we have two items that are correct, hard copy and electronically. They were inadvertently re, uh, left off, so they, they, uh, are added. Um, the City Clerk says I need to read them into the record though, so. Item number eight says, "An ordinance amending the ordinance number five zero seven nine is amended by the City of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in section ten dash four dash four, approving a rezone of certain property located west of twenty-ten West Ridgeway Avenue." And also add them, adding item nine, "An ordinance amending the two thousand eight traffic code by amending section five four four, always stop intersections by adding subsection thirty-six Schallas Road and Ainsborough Avenue." And also the approval of minutes of October sixteen, twenty-seventeen, regular session as proposed.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have an agenda, and first up on our agenda are a couple proclamations. First, I would like to call up, uh, Brittany Appleton, and I think you have some other folks with you, so if you would please come up. All right, how are you? And you, and you. All right, um, City of Waterloo, Iowa proclamation. Whereas one in three women will experience violence in their lifetime. And whereas intimate partner violence impacts victims, children, family, friends, and the community at large. And whereas domestic violence is not confined to any group or group of people, but is experienced in all economic, racial, ethnic, educational, societal, and religious groups, and is sustained by societal indifference. And whereas perpetrators of domestic violence should be held accountable for their actions, and victims should have access to support and services to help them overcome their experience. And whereas it is important to recognize the compassion and dedication of the individuals who provide support to victims of intimate partner violence, and work to increase public understanding of this significant problem. And whereas only a coordinated effort from all community members will put a stop to this heinous crime. Now I therefore, Quinton Hart, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, Iowa, do hereby proclaim the October twenty-sixth, seven, two thousand seventeen as Gentleman Day. So, Brittany, can you tell us about this occasion?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for your support again this year. Um, every October, we choose a day and proclaim that as Gentleman Day. Um, and that is a chance for, uh, men in the community to stand up and say, "I am a gentleman," and for Waypoint and others in the community to recognize them as a gentleman. Um, and so being a gentleman means that you are not going to, um, commit acts of violence towards women or anyone else. Um, and it's also about calling out, um, acts of violence and acts of disrespect, um, with family and friends and community members, and educating our youth about respect, so. Um, and that's what's really going to change the culture, so, thank you.
All right, and thank you so much for, um, reaching out and making sure of the awareness, because in some situations, people don't want to talk about what takes place outside of the family or outside of the household. But providing that avenue for people to be able to communicate, bringing that awareness is absolutely needed for our communities and to strengthen our community as well. So I thank you for your advocacy, and I will post the picture on the shirt. All right, thank you so much. Thank you, thank you, thank you ladies, bye-bye. All right, I would like to call up, uh, Mr. Rudy Jones. Um, I think Precious is with us, and Barb is with us today as well. And I don't see, um, one other, so would you please join us up front? Tighten that button, huh? Hello, hello. All right, City of Waterloo, Iowa proclamation. Whereas the City of Waterloo supports a healthy and safe environment for children and is dedicated to the protection of the health of all children. And whereas lead-contaminated paint, dust, and soil are commonly found in older homes, specifically those built prior to nineteen seventy-eight, and is the primary source of lead exposure of children. And whereas lead poisoning, which is increased level of lead in the blood, is especially dangerous for children, particularly those under six years of age, and causes serious irreversible health effects. And whereas it is important that older housing units are tested and identified for lead hazards. And whereas it is vital that all citizens of Waterloo, especially parents and child caregivers, are aware of the dangers of lead poisoning. And that appropriate screening is sought for their children as a preventative measure. And whereas the City of Waterloo has partnered with the following organizations, instrumental in the prevention of lead poisoning and the execution of our Lead Hazard Control and Healthy Homes Grant, Blackhawk County Health Department, Waterloo Fire Rescue, Fire Rescue, Landlords of Blackhawk County, Operation Threshold, People, Threshold, it's not Threshold, it's right. Uh, Peoples Community Health Clinic, YWCA, Waterloo Neighborhood Services, Waterloo Housing Authority, Tri-County Child and Family Development Council, Inc., and licensed and registered daycare providers. Now therefore, I Quinton Hart, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, Iowa, do hereby proclaim the week of October twenty-second through the twenty-eighth at two thousand seventeen as National Lead Poisoning Prevention Week. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir. Uh, thank you, Mayor and Council, for this opportunity to be the recipient of this three-year grant. We're in the final stages of our negotiation, and hopefully we'll be under contract the first of November, no later than the fifteenth. But we certainly would like to thank all of our partners and our board for all the encouragement and direction they've given us. And we've got a twist this year where we're going to be adding a significant number of rental units to, uh, the hundred and twenty units we're seeking to address over the next three years. We've got Ms. Precious Clark, one of our new board members, and Ms. Barb Grant, an old friend and a partner in a lot of our housing, uh, initiatives in Waterloo.
Director of Operation Threshold. So, uh, I want to thank you for your advocacy as well. As mentioned in this proclamation, the impact that it has on the lives of children and the awareness, and thank you so much for applying for the grant. I know you had very short staff, so you had to do a, a mountain of work to be able to do this, so we thank you and your staff for your advocacy, the board and your partners for their support. And we look forward to some great things happening to, to change the environment in which people live in, so. Thank you very much, sir. All right, thank you. All right, and next I would like to call up Latonya Graves and company, okay. Uh, with regards to, uh, the NAACP Banquet, Steadfast and Immovable. All right. Whereas the National Association for the Advancement of Color People is the nation's oldest and largest civil rights organization. Whereas its half-million adult and youth members throughout the United States and the world are the premier advocates for civil rights in their communities, conducting voter registration drives and monitoring equal opportunity in the public and private sec- sectors. And whereas the Blackhawk County branch of the NAACP for the Advancement of Color People was chartered in nineteen twenty-one and will on Saturday, October twenty-eighth, hold its annual NAACP Freedom Fund Dinner in Waterloo, Iowa. Now therefore, I Quinton Hart, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, do hereby proclaim October twenty-eighth, two thousand seventeen, steadfast and immovable in Waterloo, and recognize the NAACP for their role to ensure that political, educational, social, and economic equality of minority group citizens and to eliminate racial prejudice. So, welcome this evening. Can you please tell us about this week?
Of course. This will be our ninety-sixth Annual Freedom Fund Dinner. And our guest speaker is going to be Terry Johnson. He's a former Waterloo native, native, and, uh, an East High Trojan alumni. Woo-hoo, East High! And, uh, so again, the banquet is this Saturday, October twenty-eighth. The tickets are fifty dollars, which includes a yearly membership. And you won't want to miss it. Um, Terry is an awesome speaker, and I'm looking forward to having him here.
And if someone wanted to purchase tickets, where would they call, or is there a website?
Well, you could call three one nine, two one four, three four, three four, and you will reach me.
Three one nine, two one four, three four, three four. So, Latonya, we want to thank you for all of your advocacy, for standing up for those without a voice, making sure that their rights are being cared for and treated in the right way, uh, for doing it for many years, and all of the things you're involved in. We want to thank you so much, so if we can, Latonya, a round of applause.
And the deadline is Wednesday, so if, uh, you don't purchase your tickets before Wednesday, you won't see me.
All right, thank you so much. All right, so it is now time for, uh, oral presentations. Your opportunity to come up to address the city council and let us know what your thoughts are, so please state your name and address for the record and let us know what's going on.
Jim Chapman, two-two-four Birch. I got more of a concern, Mayor. Uh, it's about bicycles. Not bicycles in general, but I was coming home from church, uh, Saturday night, coming down Third Street, turning onto Bayer Street, and I think that's where Sullivan starts, right there. And if it wouldn't have been for my wife, we'd have probably been missing another resident of Waterloo. Because she hollered right away, and a bicycle come right out of Sullivan, right out on Bayer, right in front of me. No lights, no reflectors, nothing. So, I just got a concern that we gotta, I have nothing against bicycles, but I guess they gotta be marked if they're going to ride them at night, you know? We gotta, we gotta be able to see them there.
Right, right.
Thank you.
It, it helped me thinking too, um, uh, maybe trying to do some more informational things. I know Chief Trowka has a, uh, spot-on radio. Uh, we have the Heart for City program as well. I know we've listed some bicycle safety items on our website, but just trying to think about how we can coalesce and go into this winter, um, with the, with the greater plan to make people aware that you have to follow the, the rules and also be able to make sure that you have safe practices as well, so.
Well, I came close, that's why, that's the only reason I'm up here. I came close to really, I don't know what would have happened.
Right, right.
All right, Mayor.
All right, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Wanting a second time?
Mr. Mayor, receiving and filing oral comments?
Checking.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, oral comments closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda. That's items one A through B three, and within that are the bills payment. Bills payment this week, four million, two hundred and ninety-five thousand, one hundred and seven dollars and eighty-five cents. That's four comma two nine five comma one zero seven point eight five.
A motion has been made with the second. There are a lot of, uh, setting the date of hearings and developments on here as well, so everyone please note, um, but council, questions? Madam Clerk, roll call vote?
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
All right, those items carried. Someone take, uh, number two, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to receive and file proof of publication of a notice of public hearing for the Motor Grader Reynolds to support- for the motor grader Reynolds to support snow operations.
Second. That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this particular item on the agenda? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor, move to close the hearing?
Checking.
That motion's been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor, move to adopt a resolution confirming approval of specifications, form of contract, etc.
Checking.
That motion's been made with the second, council questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Item carries.
Mr. Mayor, move to adopt a resolution authorizing to proceed.
Checking.
That motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
All right, that item carries.
Mr. Mayor, move to receive and file and instruct city clerk to read bids.
Checking.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Madam Clerk?
The estimate was $100,800. Our first bidder was Murphy Tractor of Waterloo, Iowa. Their bid amount was $107,200. And our second bidder was Ziegler Cat of Postville, Iowa. Their bid amount was $130,000.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, move to adopt a resolution authorizing motor grader rental bid to Murphy Tractor of Waterloo, Iowa, for the rental of four motor graders to support snow operations in the amount of $107,200 and approving the contract and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Checking.
That motion has been made with the second, madam clerk?
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
All right, that item is complete. Someone take, um, three, four, three and four and five, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Amos?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving Cloverdale Park lease agreement with the Black Hawk County Board of Supervisors and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Number four is a resolution approving extension of a moratorium on a period, for a period ending December 4th, 2017, for the issuance of a special permit or license for the establishment of any new recycling junk or salvage yards. And number five is a resolution approving the professional services agreement with Strand Associates of Madison, Wisconsin, in an amount not to exceed $58,000 for engineering and construction-related services for the anaerobic lagoon upgrades and the biogas N-U study and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Checking.
That motion has been made with the second. Anyone have questions?
David Drier, 3145 West Forest Street. This pertains to number five. Are we still using methane at the present sewer and out on East, out on Easton?
Anything else, or?
Yes, but it'll be after I get the answer to that question?
Answer's yes.
And that's with one T.
The answer's yes.
Okay. In 1972, I went for, went to work for Grange Heating through 1977. At that time, I went down and sold a furnace to the present plant. So we were using methane then to fire the furnaces down there. So we know how to do it. My question is, why do we need to have $58,000 in a study to know something we already know? Let's put that $58,000 towards the, uh, construction of that equipment that's already being used down at Easton. That seems to me a lot more money spent wisely than, uh, looking for a study that already tells us what we already know. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve, you want to talk a little bit about what's happening, number five?
Steve Holmbraker, Waste Management Services Director. We generate biogas or methane at two locations within the city. One of those is at Easton, and we are reusing as much of that as we can to reheat. Well, we have to, the waste that comes in, we have to heat it up. We have two, I'm going to digress a little bit on that project, but we have an anaerobic digestion called a T-PAD, a thermo and a mesophilic. We heat the waste up to 131 degrees Fahrenheit in the first two sets of digesters, and then the final four, we cool it and process it down to 95 degrees. So in that process, we do take the methane that's generated, similar to, I think, what was being addressed before, and we do use it to heat the waste in a series of boilers. This project is looking at utilization, the biogas from methane that's generated at the anaerobic lagoon. That anaerobic lagoon treats waste from, that are essentially waste coming from Tyson. We've had a contract since 2007 with a company called Plant Energy to take that gas, clean it up, and then return it to Tyson. And part of what's happened is the price of natural gas has dropped over the years, and so the value of the biogas as well has dropped. A year ago, we were getting 50 cents per mm BTU. That's a value of the gas, and we're now down to 10 cents per mm BTU. So what this study is doing is looking at other alternatives of where there are very substantial potential dollars that can be made off of this biogas. The cities of Des Moines, Dubuque, Muscatine's looking at it, Sioux City. And so this is to take a look at that as well as a proposal by Plant Energy to better utilize the gas. In conjunction with this, we are having, we've had a lot of issues. There, the lagoon has a membrane cover on it. And that membrane cover is near the end of its life. No matter what we do, we have to replace that lagoon. Over the weekend, with the weather that was there, we had, we went out and got a call from Plant Energy over the weekend. And the reason you can't do it, this operates under negative pressure. And under this negative pressure, if you have any leaks, under negative pressure, you're sucking atmospheric air, in other words, oxygen and nitrogen. So the nitrogen level is typically down around maybe 2%. It was up to 9%. We went out this morning and found four holes in this, and it's just cracking and breaking. So one, we do need to, if we're going to continue to do anything, we do need to replace the lid. So this is taking a look at that and helping us evaluate all options. And there, with, there's a thing called RINs, Renewable Identification Numbers. I don't know why it's that, for this type of gas. And there's a lot more beneficial if we can get this quality of gas to what they call pipeline quality. So that's what we're looking at, trying to look at the options and get the best, for lack of a better way to put it, bang for our buck, out of the biogas that's being generated.
And I had the fortunate opportunity to take about a three, four-hour tour of all of our facilities. The anaerobic lagoon, does every city have a lagoon as such? And tell, if you can let the council and citizens know, this is a huge potential, this is a great opportunity moving forward, is it not?
Well, the anaerobic lagoon that we have to treat waste, to give you an idea, this is what I'd call an environmental workhorse. Tyson slaughters about 18,000 to 19,000 hogs a day, and the waste generated from that is the equivalent of a population of a town of 300,000. So, we remove of the pollutants roughly 75 of the total suspended solids or TSS or BOD in this lagoon. And so it's just a major workhorse. And by the process, anaerobic means without air. And without the air, you generate the methane gas, or what we call biogas. And it's about 65% methane, 35% under normal conditions, without sucking in oxygen, 35% CO2. So, like I said, it is a workhorse. It also has the capabilities, which we have the capabilities, a lot of other towns do, to make some possible improvements and bring in additional industries, because it's, it is an environmental workhorse. It gives us a potential that a lot of other cities don't have to bring in the waste and use this lagoon to actually treat the waste and potentially even generate more biogas.
All right, thank you. Council, questions? Madam Clerk, three, four, and five?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Six and seven, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the professional service agreement with RJN Group of Des Moines, Iowa, in the amount not to exceed $39,500 for engineering services for a collection system data analysis and authorize mayor to execute said document. And number seven, a resolution approving the professional service agreement with AECOM Technical Services Incorporated of Waterloo, Iowa, in the amount not to exceed $16,000 for the fiscal year 2018 Sink Creek Channel Cleanout and Shaping Contract Number 924 and authorize mayor to execute said document.
Checking.
That motion has been made with the second. Steve, one more time, tell us about number six, please.
Steve Holmbraker, Waste Management Services Director. Number six is a, is a contract with a firm called, who specializes in sanitary sewer collection systems. We've collected a lot of data. First of all, we put in these devices called volume calc. This was part of what AECOM did in the original capacity study. We've got some others that are in the sanitary sewer lines to help us collect data on the volume of wastewater that's coming through under various, you know, and then we've got to analyze that with rain flow as well. And so we've got a lot of this data we've collected. We've collected it at the lagoons, or at the, excuse me, the lift stations as well. And so this is taking this data and analyzing it. It is a necessary evaluation that needs to be done as we finalize the consent decree, which has a lot of things that are required to be done. And by the way, I think, just for everybody's edification, we're scheduled to give a presentation November 13th, updating everybody where we're at with the consent decree with AECOM. So, that's what it's doing. It's basically taking a look and making sense out of the data that's been collected. And I will add, this was when John Appoint, he kindly reminds me, just reminded me, we had a meeting last week, that when we put a lot of this, we were able to take our staff and our capabilities and install this data. And we saved the city a considerable amount of money by doing that versus contracting that out.
All right, thank you. Council, questions, six and seven? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
All right, that item carries. Number eight, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Welper?
Number eight is a motion to receive and file, consider, motion to receive, file, and consider for the second time, an ordinance amending ordinance number 5079 as amended by the City of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in section 10-4-4, approving a rezone of certain property located west of 2010 West Bridgeway Avenue.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Jacobs?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
All right, item carries.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules?
Checking.
Motion's been made with the second, madam clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
No.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
All right, that item fails. So we'll, you're missing councilman.
Oh, yeah.
Missing councilman. All right, so number nine, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey?
I'd like to make a motion, receive, file, consider, and pass for the second time, an ordinance amending the 2008 Traffic Code by amending section 544, always stop intersections by adding subsection 36, Shawless Road and Ainsborough Avenue.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Is Mohammed here this evening?
He is not.
Okay, he's not here at the moment. I had a very productive meeting with Mohammed today. You recall, a couple of weeks ago, I asked for a traffic count. The traffic count that you had for that study was only for one day. And the traffic count that Mohammed did for me is actually six days, seven days? Seven days, okay. The study is showing, just that we thought, that Shawless Road does have more traffic on it than Ainsborough does. And I'm looking to try to figure out how we can get traffic flow, eliminate some of our stop signs, and hopefully eliminate some of our accidents. So speaking with Mohammed, how I saw this should go down. I saw putting the stop signs on Ainsborough rather than on Shawless. And we talked about putting in a flashing light that would flash 24 hours. He and I agreed that after a while, people don't see the flashing light anymore. But I've seen places in Missouri, as well as Iowa, where they have an approaching flashing light, that the light remains dark unless traffic approaches. So I was asking Mohammed if, if we could switch the stop signs to Ainsborough and put in approaching flashing light. And he said, yes, that would work. But he would like to see flashing lights on both directions. So what I would like to do is I would like to rewrite this ordinance with stop signs on Ainsborough, with flashing approaching lights on all four corners. I wish Mohammed was here.
Mr. Mayor? Councilman Welper, that, the seven-day study, you said you have some different numbers?
Yes.
And it's showing that there is more traffic on Shawless than Ainsborough?
Yes.
Do you have the exact numbers so that we?
Yes, I do.
Can you share that with us for each direction?
I certainly can. Westbound, 2092. Eastbound, 1,842. Southbound, 1912. Northbound, 634.
So the second set of numbers that you gave are actually for Ainsborough?
Yes. So what you're looking at is about 200 cars, 200 more cars a day on Shawless versus?
Shawless versus Ainsborough?
Versus Ainsborough, if I understand this correctly.
Thank you.
The study showed about 1,400 more cars a week. Okay. So that Mohammed is agreeing that regardless what we do here, that because of all the development that's taking place out there, we need to re-study this every two years. But he didn't have a problem with what I'm suggesting. But it's up to this council what you want to do.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Welper, did you also get any information on pedestrians or bicycles?
No, I was only requesting automobile traffic.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey?
One of the things I noted, I mean, from listening to the numbers there, it still is a significant amount of traffic that goes through, going every, all four ways there. And to me, what we're doing here is we're trying to make this intersection here as safe as possible. And I would not want to stop what we're doing right here if there's flashers that can even benefit a four-way stop. I don't have any problem with that whatsoever, but I don't believe that we should stop this given the numbers that Councilman Welper has said there, because I still believe that those, given what he's related there, are significant, that's a significant amount of traffic going in every direction there.
Again, you're looking at 1,400 cars more a week on Shawless than Ainsborough.
And I understand that, but it's a significant number regardless which direction you're going. Councilman Welper's what I'm saying.
Okay, I mean, that's fine. I'm just saying, I'm trying to have some traffic flow here and still maintain safety. Because I think we've got just too many stop signs, and people are getting so sick of them, they're just driving right through them. I'm trying to get some traffic flow and still maintain safety with an oncoming flashing light in all four directions. Mohammed has requested, he thought, he said that would work, but he would like to see the flashing signs, flashing lights on all four corners.
Well, Mr. Mayor, in response to that, I, I'm in favor of passing this for the second time and then not suspending the rules and asking Mohammed to come here next week and to address the council at the third reading. Well, it's not next week, it's two weeks from today, quite frankly, so.
And I don't have a problem with that.
Mr. Mayor? Has the staff recommended any other change from what we've heard before?
This is the first I heard about it. Sandy?
Sandy Greco, Interim Public Works Director. Mohammed and I discussed this too, and he, he's supposed to be here, but I- Mohammed and I discussed this too and he, he's supposed to be here, but I don't know where he is. He, he said this would work, but he prefers the four-way stop as a safety. But it's up to the council to decide. However, like, like Ron said, every two years, this needs to be studied, even if we change it to stop Ainsborough or if we put a four-way stop in, because it could warrant signals eventually. So it's just, but he does prefer the four-way, but he is in agreement with Ron that this would work.
He's here.
Oh, very good.
Oh, good. Well, no, I mean, that's what we discussed.
Mohammed, we, we, we've heard that you have a new recommendation that you prefer at this location.
He's recommending the old way. I'm.
I heard, well, I'm, I'm, haven't heard about this, so, Mr. Mohammed, could you please let us know from the podium, Mr. Councilman Welper indicated that you are somewhat in favor with his proposal for flashing lights or whatever. I don't even know, this is the first I heard about it.
Approaching lights would flash?
Mohammed Alahi, traffic engineer. I think the proposal was kind of sort of actuated, flashing lights, if, when a car approaches, the lights start flashing. Could be on the main street, on the side street, on both. That's, that's a solution, but the best solution, as I mentioned before, is the four-way stops. So if we're going to grade them, say, four-way stops going to get grade A and there are other solutions, other passing grades, grade B, grade C and others, I would recommend still four-way stops, even though that would work, but not as well as what we have earlier proposed.
Yeah. Do we know what percentage of people stop at stop signs? Because I'm hearing nobody stops at stop sign. I may ask Dan to close his eyes and do a poll in here to see how many people actually stop, but. So what is it, so flashing lights when you get?
This is basically, a lot of places use it for when you can't see the cross-traffic, there's sight distance deficiencies, of course, they might have used it other places too. You use some kind of detection or radar or loops or some other sort of detection. When you detect the approaching car, it tells the cars waiting on the side that, hey, don't leave your stop sign, there's a car coming, even though you can't see it. And then you can also put a warning light for the approaching car on the main street, start flashing, saying that some car is waiting at the stop sign where you can't see it, so be careful when you cross this intersection.
Okay, so, so it is, so it's talking about changing the stop signs or leaving, changing it and adding flashers or something?
I was talking in general about how those things work. I think Councilman Welper's proposal was putting stop signs on Ainsborough Avenue and add some kind of actuated flashing light to tell people, hey, there's a car approaching on Shawless or tell the Shaw, or and tell the Shawless people their car waiting behind a stop sign.
Okay. Just a quick question and then we'll take Mr. Dryer's questions. If you had stop signs in a location for the last five or six years and you've driven that way and you're one of the two thousand people or whatever, what happens when you come potentially to that stop, when there's no stop signs anymore?
Me personally, at the location, there are no stop signs?
No, if you've been stopping there for the past five years, I guess it would take some growing pains to get people to get used to not stopping anymore. When you stop the other way.
He's talking about new signals is basically what he's saying. Signal change.
Yep. Yeah, probably at, at beginning, but in a few days.
After a while.
Yeah, if they travel that area often, they'll get used to it.
All right. Well, don't go anywhere. Mr., Mr. Dryer has some questions for us. Or maybe a question.
David Dryer, thirty-one forty-five West Forest Street. I guess I hear about the traffic counts and all that, how many accidents have been on that corner? How many accidents involving just cars or how many accidents involving cars and pedestrians? We talk about traffic counts, but we don't talk about how many accidents have happened on that corner because of the way it is situated right now. My biggest thing of reading different articles in the paper, et cetera, is that we need a pedestrian and a bicycle training session. We need bicycles licensed so that if I see a bicyclist violating a stop sign somewhere, I can get their number and turn them in just like I can with a car. When, when you don't have the same control or education, even though it states in the bicycle laws that they are to abide by every law that a vehicle has, I see them all the time violating every law that's out there that we have to abide by, whether I stop or don't stop. If I don't stop, somebody can turn my license plate in and I'll get a ticket in the mail or I'll, I'll see one of Mr. Chalka's officers knocking on my door. I can't do that with a bicycle because all I can say, well, well, it was a bicyclist and, and he had a blue sweatshirt on. Well, tomorrow he's wearing a gray one. So I think we need more education on the bicycle aspect and we need licensing on the bicycles. In nineteen sixty-four, at the age of fourteen, I had a bicycle in Parkersburg, paid five bucks for it, that fastened to the back of my seat on my bicycle. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Sandy?
I have a crash history and there were five crashes at that intersection, one in twenty thirteen, three in twenty fourteen, and one in twenty sixteen.
All right.
That's three and a half years, doesn't include the two thousand seventeen. We didn't have the data at the time. Two thousand seventeen, at least, we know there is one pedestrian.
Three and a half years.
Three and a half years, five crashes, four out of five were stop, stop sign runnings.
Mohammed, what is the letter grade if you switch the stop signs?
Okay, we did a flow analysis, capacity analysis. With four-way stops, we get level of service A, which, if you reverse it, Ainsborough will be level of service B and Shawless will be A. Right now, it's reversed. Shawless has stop signs and has level of service B. Ainsborough has level of service A. When you switch the stops, you just switch that level of service. Ainsborough will be B, Shawless will be A. But fortunately, four ways, you have level of service A for all approaches.
AA on a four-way stop?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor? One of the things that Councilman Welper talked about was actual traffic flow and how the four-way stop would slow down the traffic. Is that accurate, Mohammed, from a standpoint of the actual flow of the traffic by switching that around? Is that going to change, putting a four-way stop in there, is that actually going to change the traffic flow as opposed to having a stop on Ainsborough with Shawless being the through?
There's different way we measure traffic flow. The main way we, we measure traffic flow efficiency is by level of service, which is delays. And actually, the four-way stops will reduce the delays, so they make the flow better. There's another way that's not often used is the number of stops. He's right, the number of stops may go up, actually, how many times people have stopped. But the overall delay or the flow as we normally measure it will go down. That's what the level of service is. Level of service actually measures the delays per car, average delays per car.
So we would have an AA instead of an AB?
Yes.
Question for Noel, wake up over there, Noel. When we take a look at the future of that area and potential growth, are there expectations for that to grow even more and even more traffic being there?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. Definitely, the future land use map will show, obviously, the northeast corner as shown as our business park area. It is located within the TIFF at Shawless and Ainsborough there. I believe the other three corners are shown as residential and obviously, we're seeing great residential to the west of there. We would continue to see that move easterly towards Ainsborough and eventually jump south of Shawless long-term. And the Water Works did put in infrastructure along Shawless Road to accommodate for some of that growth.
All right, so the area would be even more populated, which goes back to a point that was made, in another couple of years, we have to take a look at that, is it roundabouts? Is it signalized? But right now, what I'm hearing from our traffic engineer is the safest route is a four-way stop, unless I got that wrong.
No, that's correct.
All right. We ready to vote or?
I have one question. I've seen in other parts of the country and I apologize if we have them here, but where the stop sign is flashing all the way around, is that an option to put in that faraway intersection? Or does it drive the cost? I mean, the cost is immaterial when it comes to save.
The ones that have small LEDs flashing?
Mm-hmm, right.
It, it's possible.
Okay.
We were going to put beacons on them anyway, you know, on the top of the signs like, like they have now and then at Kimball. So it, it is possible.
Well, I think the continuity of stops is going to be more important than changing one and not the other.
Right, and they aren't seen really clear during the day.
Okay.
At night more than during the day.
Thank you.
All right.
One of the numbers that we didn't, we didn't discuss was the delay time versus eastbound, westbound, by switching the signs is less than a second. So we're not talking a lot of time here.
All right, I guess, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
No.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries, Madam?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to suspend the rules?
Second. That motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to appeal to Councilman Welper, Welper to allow this to go through to the third reading. So I'm just appealing to him and for him to agree.
He's appealing, you gotta speak into the mic, Councilman Morrissey.
I am, Mr. Mayor. I, I'm just appealing to Councilman Welper to go along and suspend the rules this year.
It costs you.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to mo, make a motion to consider and?
That item carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to consider and pass for the third time and adopt said ordinance.
Second. That motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
No.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Council. Number, Mr.?
That did pass then. All three readings have passed.
Yes, it did.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, and if you would have asked to do number ten, I would have said, no. Is anyone else, anyone else like to do number ten?
Mr. Mayor? I moved to direct city clerk to read bids for the recycling processing facility to support the city Waterloo's curbside recycling program and referred bids to the interim public director for review.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Madam Clerk?
The estimate was thirty-two thousand dollars. Our first bidder was Republic Services. Their bid amount was one hundred and seventeen dollars per ton for processing and transportation minus a rebate every month of at least forty dollars per ton, depending on market, with a total cost per ton of seventy-seven dollars, depending on market value of recyclables. I think we can see why this was tabled for one week for reading. The second bidder was Cedar Valley Recycling. Their bid amount was fifty-five dollars per ton with contamination of ninety dollars per ton with zero dollars for rebates. Ninety percent of loads are, if ninety-eight percent of loads are contaminated, sixty-five dollars per ton for not scheduled hours Monday through Friday.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
And I think that's Public Works Director.
Public Works, interim Public Works Director.
Not Public Director.
Motion for adjournment?
Second.
That motion's been made with second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Meeting adjourned. Thank you.